School committee meeting of the new school year. I'm going to call it to order and a reminder that, do we have the camera going?
Now we do.
Now we do.
Thank you.
Okay, make sure we know this meeting is being recorded. And if anybody's intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, you should notify me at this time. Otherwise, for the benefit of everybody else, it isn't being recorded. Do we have any public participation? All right, seeing none. Looking for approval of minutes from the July 11th meeting. So moved. No further discussion. Seeing none. All in favor.
Aye.
I think that was unanimous, Karen.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Andreessen is prepared to talk about EV charging stations. Mark, I think you all heard a full presentation. And maybe you would like to summarize what you saw and heard.
Mr. Andreessen, that company you're representing tonight proposed that we put EV charging stations on the Silver Lake property for the benefit of our faculty, students, and the general public in the area. These charging stations are a little bit different than the typical ones. This is a different level, and I'll let her explain to that. They're a quick charging device. And there is an opportunity for us to proceed with some revenue from this to help provide the system programs here at Silver Lake. As well as the idea of the technology in our parking lot. Be a nice thing for our students to see as a possible career choice. Without that, Mr. Andreessen?
So I have a PowerPoint I could go through. It'd be a little bit more exhaustive if I do. Or I can just, off the rip, talk about what we're proposing to do for the town, for the school district. If standing here is okay with everybody, then I'll just do that. Or if you would like me to stand in the center, I can do that as well, but I won't be able to.
I think if you stand there and give us the offer of minutes.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you, everyone, for the time tonight. I appreciate moving me to the front so that I can have some dinner before you. So a little bit about the company that I'm representing. I'm one of the owners. We're Enovus Energy. We were founded in 2019. Both my business partner and I came out of our last company as things went a little bit sideways there when they went public on the stock exchange. We jumped into the EV charging space right in 2019 because we heard that the utility companies were going to be getting into what's called decarbonization. A lot of our relationships are with Eversource and National Grid. Since that time, in 2019, we've installed about 1,000 ports in about 15 different states in the country. So really understand the technology. Right now, there's a limited window that is closing on fast charging rebates. So when I say it's closing, we don't know if it's going to go away in a year or two, or if they're going to reduce the amount of money they're paying. How it's relevant to the town is there's a business model specific to the municipalities that works really well, where a third-party investor will pay for the stations, and they will maintain, own, and operate the stations at a municipal site so that the municipality doesn't have to take responsibility for taking care of the stations, maintaining them. And in exchange for having the stations on-site for a set amount of time, there's a revenue share. What we've offered through the third party to Silver Lake Regional High School is a two-tiered offer. One would be if we just do this site here, then that company would share 20% of the profit with the high school or the school district. And then if we get the site at Kingston Elementary School, we would combine that and offer a 30% profit share. So that's how that works. I want to talk a little bit about EV and where it's going. We've seen a pretty significant increase in EV sales in this country from, you know, somewhere around 100,000 units in 2013 to in 2018, there was about 350,000 units sold. The trend has gone off slightly over the past one or two years. It's still maintaining, but it's not shooting up like it did in '18, and '17, and '16. One thing we need to understand about EV, I drive a Tesla, is it is technology. And what happens with technology is because it's technology, it continues to improve. So about two months ago, about four weeks ago, there was a big EV show out in Los Angeles. My car right now will get about 320 miles of range per charge. And that takes me about 40 minutes to fill up at a fast charging station, which is what we're talking about putting in at the district. Now Samsung just released a new battery. It's called Solid State. So with Solid State batteries, there's significantly less risk of fires. They don't respond to cold nearly as much as the lithium-ion battery does. And this particular battery is designed to charge in 10 minutes with a range of 600 miles. So that's like a game-changing leapfrog technology that's right, they're going to actually be producing these in vehicles next year, in 2025. The purpose of me sharing that with you is EV adoption is underway. I just came out of a meeting with a guy from Kansas City who came out to our office and was explaining what's happening in California. It's happening in Michigan. It's happening in Ohio, Indiana. We've done some work in Texas. This technology is moving. So the numbers that I'm going to project for you in just a few minutes here are estimates based on today's usage. Five years from now, I would anticipate we're probably going to have 40, 50, 60% more usage than we do right now. Does that make sense? Any questions? Okay.
One question.
Sorry, I've got a question.
Yes.
So would these be Tesla-only or like Tesla-specific charging stations? Or, it's like my husband drives an EV that is not a Tesla model. Are these more broadly applicable?
So this is a great question, Amy. Because what's happening is there's a consolidation in the market. Tesla was really smart in the way that they've rolled out their supercharging network. To be very specific, the difference is what's called a CCS adapter versus a NACS adapter. And NACS, which is also, the acronym is North American Charging Standard, that's what Tesla's port is, is kind of getting universalized. So with my Tesla, I now have an adapter that will allow me to plug into a CCS charging station. Generally, the way we're specifying, because each unit has two plugs, so it's a dual-port unit. One plug will be CCS, one will be NACS. However, it really is becoming a non-issue because it can all be interchanged with adapters. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Great. I wish that I...
Westover.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So I'm not familiar with EV vehicles. I don't drive one. But when I think of a parking spot, I think of like a teacher coming in for work for the day. But if these are EV spots, that means that there's going to be continual traffic rotation throughout. So is this something that you've identified as a specific area on campus? Or where would...
Yes. So there's two options. One, which is my original proposal, would be to be right on the corner of 27 and the parking lot, in what I believe is called the senior parking lot.
Upper lot.
Upper lot. Thank you.
One through six.
However, I did discover three-phase power on the up road next to the admin building. And it might make sense to relocate the original suggestion to the first six spots in that part of the parking lot because I would gander, it's probably a lot less traffic in that area.
To clarify, those are the spots painted red right now that are the overflow parking spots. Right? But further from the school, but closer to the admin building in the municipal.
And then by the spring, they are assigned because we have more drivers in spots.
Okay. Thank you. From a revenue perspective, in the short term, I would recommend over in the senior lot, just from a revenue perspective. But medium-long term, once people understand that these stations are here, then it won't matter.
I just, as a safety issue for students, I mean, what, I mean, safer meaning what, is it 40 minutes for a full charge? So are just random people just going to be walking around the lots because they don't want to sit in their cars? I mean, that's a safety issue. We have no idea who's coming on school grounds. And now they're just walking around and, oh, I'm just charging my car. We have no idea who these people are. And it's, it's a big concern for me, just a, and especially where you have it primarily set into a student parking lot.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, all I can say is that that's valid. Franklin has done this. Their chargers are literally on the side of the building, and they have not had this trouble, or they haven't so far had any problems. And then just personally, like anecdotally, when I charge my car at a fast charger, generally, I'm on my device, checking emails and... So I don't know that you would have trouble with people walking around the school campus. But again, that's just me, anecdotally. I tend to...
How long has Franklin had theirs?
They have, we put them in over there in last December, I think.
Okay.
You know, the benefit to their community, he, they're saying that having the charging stations there is actually increased adoption of EVs. We're seeing more and more traffic come to the school during off-hours, charging. And he's gotten several emails from people in the town thanking him for putting the stations and being able to be a public accessible charging point. Any other questions before I continue? Yes?
Is there any chance that Silver Lake could lose money or that there are any costs that we would need to incur as a result of putting these units in?
The only responsibility that you're going to have that has some cost associated is making sure that those stations are free and clear of snow. That's, the spaces need to be guaranteed, and the spaces need to be free and clear from snow. Yes?
How many guaranteed spaces do you...
How many what?
How many spaces, parking spaces, parking spots do you...
Six.
Six is enough? Because there'll be six charging stations, right?
There'll be three charging stations with two plugs per station.
Okay, we don't need any space for the people waiting?
No.
What happens if they're damaged? Somebody drives away, still connected, takes a...
Network.
You know, like who's responsible for any damage?
So the charging stations will be on an insurance policy?
Paid by...
The owning entity. So the third party will pay for the insurance policy. Fortunately, because it's electronic, I was not able to drive away when I was plugged in, which I tried to do once.
Yeah, I've heard of that.
They won't let you do that.
Who is this third party?
It's a company called Charging Networks.
I have a couple comments.
Yep.
Just the presentation you've heard is pretty close to what we heard as a facility safer committee. I did some research regarding zoning with the Kingston zoning officer. And his original opinion was that, you know, a commercial use of this was going to have an issue. I touched base again with him today. And it was not a situation where he felt this would be a showstopper to the operation, especially seeing we would be using them for either faculty, admin, building personnel, or students going forward as well. He considered it a testory use after further thought on it. So the other part that, our Silver Lake graduate, by the way, presented in the other was that typically organizations like ourselves, he has provided us with a sample contract, and our school council has reviewed that contract in its, you know, sample form, and identified a couple things that we can easily address. The renewal clause, removal clause would be in there. So the equipment would have to be removed. This is basically a land lease, releasing the property in exchange for a share of the profits. I will tell you, I did reach out also to the Kingston Town Administrator. They have this on the 26th of September, I believe, for the Kingston School Committee to consider. Basically, the 30% offer if we have another client, another party within our region who's come back. And there is a credit for educational use, from what I understand. Is that correct, Mr. Andreessen?
I'm not familiar with educational use credit, but the incentives are very high right now. National Grid, which fortunately, we're not in National Grid territory, they put a pause on approving charging station applications because the program's oversubscribed. Eversource is not there yet. But I would suggest you get an application in as soon as possible to avoid the program shuttering until it's refilled.
Another question. We have an option to get permitting for the six stations and perhaps put in four if we didn't feel like we needed to. And then add to that if the permit was approved so that we don't, when they become more popular.
That's a little tough. The reason is Eversource is going to size the transformer accordingly. So we could get, for example, three stations approved. Then you could reduce to four. But they would, on the application, they would reduce the size of the transformer so it's sized for the amount of stations that we're putting in.
I heard you had indicated there were only a certain number of transformers manufactured. I thought perhaps that they would go with the six.
Six is like the sweet spot.
Right.
Yep. We could do four, but the transformer would be sized for four. Sorry, Luke.
Yes, if we get involved, two other towns, it's going to go to 40%.
I'd take 30.
No, you said 40.
Did I say...
Yes, you said 40.
Let's go. Yes?
Is there a way to set like working hours or business hours for the chargers so that if there's a safety concern during the school day, it could be before and after dismissal, or weekends? Or is it a 24/7?
The requirement is the public would have access for 12 hours a day. And I'm not exactly, like, it can be, everything can be accomplished with technology nowadays. The way to do that during school hours for faculty and students, there would have to be some kinds of fob, some kind of a, you know what I mean? That would give them access, but nobody else. That can be done, but there would be probably some additional costing involved. I'm not sure.
So during the school day, staff member or student would have to go and then move their vehicle after that charging time ended, right?
Yeah, that's the, you get dwell charges, which is more profit for you, but...
But then they're missing...
They're paying the money.
But then students or faculty are incurring that charge. And they just can't like up and leave and say, oh, sorry, my car is fully charged. I have to leave now. And where that is, it's not like a, you know, I'll be back in two minutes. It's I'll see you in 10, 15, depending on the weather.
Yep. So you can set dwell charges to start kicking in as long as you want. So it could be an hour. You know, you get notified on your phone that you're 80% full and that in such and such amount of time, dwell charges will start. So we definitely put something in play that would work.
But if this is geared towards during certain times, towards the administrative, faculty, students, staff, whatever, they just can't just all of a sudden, you know, in between a break, I'm sure that they have other things that they have to do. And probably not unplugging their vehicle. And it just, they already have enough on their plate. So my problem is them having to worry about, oh, I have, I have, I got like 10 minutes, and then when I get out of here, I was supposed to go to guidance, but now I have to run out. It's, and teachers have to prepare for their next class. So it's a...
Even the physical...
Yeah, that's, that's my thing. It's, yeah.
Shane, did you have something else you wanted to ask?
Just a question. You mentioned Franklin. Are there any other districts in Mass. that have accepted these proposals or implemented them?
So we're right now in the process of installing 85 ports in Barnstable at several schools and towns, town buildings for Barnstable. Boston right now is putting in, I think, 300 chargers scattered throughout the city. Westford, I think we installed 25, 24 stations in the town of Westford. Those are all Level 2s. There's a lot happening right now in this industry.
Mr. Andreessen, do you have other points you want to make?
You know, with an app called Plug Share, you can see where stations are located. There's very few Level 3 stations, almost none around here. So I think it's a very good opportunity for both parties. Right now, Franklin High School is seeing about 33 sessions per week. That would yield somewhere between $11,500 and $17,000, depending on the profit share. And as my friend Luke brought forward, if it went to 40%, it would be even more than that. And that's, again, at today's rate of use. It's going like this. Yes?
I'm sorry. Clarify the 11,000, 5 to 17. Is that at 20%?
20% is 11, 5.
Okay.
30% is 17, 5. And so if we add 6,000 to that, it would be about 23,000. My math teacher did well.
That would be for 40%?
Yeah.
Are we taxed on that income?
You would be taxed as a 1099 type of thing. Yep.
So Mark, where does the safer committee stand on this? Do you have a recommendation yet? Are there still more studies to do? Are there things you need to clear with Fred? Are you looking for a vote?
Well, obviously Fred would have to chime in on the final contract to be signed. We don't, didn't feel that we were ready to have the superintendent sign an agreement at this point. But we certainly wanted to give Mr. Andreessen the benefit of the presentation and time and manner so he can get his permitting in if then. And the buildup he explained is five to six months?
So generally, it takes, and all of this is predicated on the incentives the way they are right now. So we want to get the application in. Generally, what we're finding from Eversource is taking five to six months to get those approvals in place. Once they're in place, then we put the final details in terms of the contracts and site host agreements. Those get signed at that time.
So you could proceed with the permitting without us officially voting 100% to support the...
So generally, we're not going to do any permitting work until we know that we have an agreement.
Of some sort?
Yeah. Yep.
But we could work on that 40% as we get closer to the plan. I did also want to add that Mr. Andreessen is offered to come into the school during career days and present the information, not just that he presented today, but the technology that's involved with these to the student body. He had a dog and pony show. He's been asked to do this before. So it would be a benefit to our students to actually hear a presentation about some of the new technology as they go forward. My opinion personally, as an individual member, is that if they can be placed on-site without impacting, significantly impacting the school, the area down by the admin building and the entrance to the middle school seem like a better spot for them at this point for the impact of parking, parking lot. They won't have the same visibility to the student body as they would in its original proposed site. The other site that I saw this afternoon after our meeting yesterday is the, they could be put on that Lake Street parking spot out by the maintenance sheds. There's 12 spots that face Pembroke Street. Six of them are full of vans, and the other six were full of folks walking onto the football field. Those spots didn't seem to be assigned to anybody particularly. They weren't numbered. I'm not sure exactly how they're used, Michaela. But that's more of a utilitarian area of the campus because of the maintenance facilities. I don't think they would be a big impact over there. Might have to reconsider a one-way passage through there. But people can follow the one-way signs to get to their EV station, I assume, too. So I think looking at those three sites of the three, I would prefer going over to the admin building side or being put out on the corner of Lake and Pembroke Street. And the street-based power on both Lake Street and on Pembroke Street. So you could pick it up, I think, pretty easy in both places. That's my, I'm in support of moving forward conceptually with at least 30% guaranteed to the region. The 20% deal didn't seem worth our time. But I think the revenue base, the perception of the revenue that we're working on, and I firmly believe that this type of vehicle is going to take off a little more, and that we would have those available to encourage our students to be, think more towards the environment and this alternate kind of vehicle.
Shane?
Just wondering if there's a cutoff date that we would have to agree by?
Getting information from Eversource is exceedingly difficult. So there's not a cutoff date until they tell me the program's closed. But I can't stress the importance of allowing me to get this application in. The application submittal is not obligatory, which means we can get you in line, and you don't have to go forward even if you get an approval. You just tell them that that application's canceled. So I don't see there is any risk to doing that. And the downside is if we miss the window, we miss the window.
So it sounds like what you could use tonight would be a vote to proceed with the application, which could also be understood as not binding to continue...
That would be great.
If we did not wish to continue.
Or say pending per whatever the other...
Further.
Just a point of order. I believe there's a potential vote on the agenda. I believe...
I don't think we have a vote on the agenda.
We do it when we know we will. It's assumed if it's on the agenda that there might be a vote. I would...
They should contact and ask about that once.
The warning is reasonably anticipated.
Okay.
I have one further point of discussion. This kind of goes back to Jen's question about the safety. And I guess this is addressed to you, Michaela. So I know in a lot of schools, there are people coming and going to use the facilities. I don't know what our high school policy is. Are members of the public allowed to run on the track during the school day or do you say they're not allowed? So that would be...
That's my thing. Like, I started to kind of spiral head until like all different, you know, because you can only spend so much time in your car. You know what I mean? That's my biggest fear. And even after hours, when kids get out of school, there's sports and track and it's middle and high school. So there's always a lot going on till, I don't know, even what, tomorrow night, Friday night light, 7 o'clock? So it's constant. Constant. I think the only month we really, you guys get off really is like July because come August, it's tryouts and it's like you're in the thick of things. Well, not you. You heard that, right? No, I know you guys were every day, 365. But I'm just saying like...
We have summer school. Seems like strength and conditioning, some camps, but not as much.
I forgot about that. So, yeah, no, school's never really closed.
We could put cameras, I assume.
Yeah.
Take, probably to move your insurance policy to have some camera on the site anyway.
So I think there's, there are additional things for us to discuss. I think there's additional things for the SAFER Committee both to consider and to bring forward for the possible final recommendation. It appears to me, I don't think I see a lot of harm in us putting in an application that doesn't bind us to anything. Seems like that might be wise to do. I can tell you from my own personal standpoint, and this is partly reflected on what's on the agenda overall. I am extremely interested in fighting even for nickels and dimes in terms of pulling in revenue and free cash flow, things like that, given what, you know, could be or is even likely to be the challenges of our finances at the end of the year, whether they're directly our finances or for the finances of the towns separately. So ours might look okay and the elementary's might look tougher, so to speak. And with that understanding, I would like to see us get to a healthier model overall. And as I said, I'm very interested in fighting even for nickels and dimes if this is to a healthier model. So I'm at least interested in exploring. So that said, I think we probably need to round up the topic this evening. We're a half hour into the meeting and we've covered one item on a very long agenda. So we could either use a motion or everybody can agree we're not moving yet. But I, I don't see it as, as an issue of a motion to proceed with the application.
I'd like me that motion to proceed with the application process and have authorized superintendent to sign an agreement to apply and at that point, well, the program pending the application process, we can revisit that for final review.
Can I ask four more questions before we...
A second question.
Both anyone?
I have a question, too.
Did you say this?
One second. Okay, go ahead.
Mrs. Gill, in regards to the parking spots, because I know that they're extremely difficult to come by, you said that those red spots were used for overflow in the spring, but would anyone be losing a parking privilege if we were to report with the application this gets approved this year?
Would anybody use the red spots if we...
Would anyone, like, this affect your parking situation?
So no, no, no students this year would lose a parking spot. What we use those spots for now is because we assign spots. So I'm going to use Carissa, our student rep, as an example, right? What's your spot number? She's got a good one.
60.
She's in spot 60, right? If someone was visiting our school, they had a meeting at the school that morning and they happened to park in her spot or another student parked in her spot, she would go to that red spot so that she is guaranteed a spot that day and not parking the faculty spot. So that's what we mean by overflow during the school year. They're not currently assigned to any one student. But by spring, when our juniors, our younger juniors are licensed or are purchaser vehicles, we do have a significant number of students who register for parking in the second half of the year. And by then, we are running low on spots. So we tend to assign those usually starting in like March or April, after, after we know snow's not coming anymore.
My concern is just six doesn't sound like a lot until six people are looking for spots.
Half that, right? Half that, thank you.
Do we need to add a review and approval by Russ to the motion?
I mean, I'm not against it. I would assume that the fact that it's non-binding and the fact that we intend to continue to review it and get a recommendation from SAFER and have a full committee approval before, a further full committee approval before officially going through it, I think all of that would be fine.
And then one last one, I promise, for this. Do we, do you have a general consensus of what, was it Franklin? What, what their revenue is and what they're going to be taxed on and what they're actually making a month for having?
So Franklin has Level 2 stations at the high school. Okay? I base these economics off of translating their data to here. Right now, they're not charging for their charging. You heard me correctly. They're offering it for free.
Someone's got to be paying because if it's free, it's too good to be true. So who's really paying for this?
Well, the town of Franklin is paying for the electricity coming through the high school. Now, they are, right now, asking me to put together a plan to make it so that they can start charging. So that's in the works.
That would not be a bad intention.
Are you feeling better?
No, I have a question now and I'm sorry. Because I just sent myself an email to call the school business manager in Franklin and ask how the revenue works. And now you're saying I can't call that person for that because they're not getting revenue. So I'm going to need you to send me a contact of somebody in Massachusetts that is a school that receives this type of revenue?
Sure.
Just because I have things to figure out.
Yep.
Thank you.
Lucas?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm a part of, as a part committee, and we had a long discussion about that. I think the impact is minimal. It's not going to be forever. It's only a 10-year agreement, right? There's no doubt that the EV vehicles is a future, so it's only going to grow. And that's, that's, I think we came to conclusion to, to accept it and to move forward with it.
You could take a straw poll.
All right. Well, we have a motion on the floor. Paul, go ahead.
One last question, anyway, from me on this topic. I've heard the word tax a few times. There's no tax impact to us on this, correct? Because I mean, if we'd be getting this 12,000, 15 grand, 17 grand, and then tax it. Jen asked and he said there was. He said it's 1099. 1099, but for what, for municipality?
I need to go back and, that's correct. I need to go back and look into that.
Yeah, because if there's a tax impact, which I can't believe for municipality, for school, there would be.
Right. We're not a privately owned, like, I was looking on your website. You've got them at like Santander and other places. Those are for-profit businesses, so they are going to be paying taxes, but for a school?
It's a very good question, and I'll clarify that.
It's part of, part of the diligence and homework, but still definitely needs to be done. And then we should work up over the course of time. So any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to proceed with putting in an application in, which would not bind us to the installation of the stations. If we just put the application in pursuant to further diligence discussion and final approval of the committee. All in favor? That was unanimous.
Okay.
All right. So the next note, I had had it in there because, and I've already kind of given something of my preamble to it. And we've spoken long enough, so we might, on this EV topic, so we might postpone a lot of additional discussion for... Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. We might postpone a lot of additional discussion for, for future meetings. But as I said, I'm particularly interested in doing anything and everything that helps us get into a better model. And I called Mark one day and said things like, can we have a fishery out back? Can we do, can we raise fish for stocking? Can we do, I mean, is there anything, is there anything further that we can do on the property that would be revenue generating? Is there anything about CTE that we could grow or expand? And again, I'm happy to fight for nickels and dimes because every hundred thousand dollars of sort of freestanding cash flow is a teacher's job. So that was really sort of the concept. Mark, if you want to add anything to that, we can keep this kind of brief because we've spent so long on the EV stations, which is kind of done in the same spirit, but...
In a nutshell, I was able to discuss with Lloyd and tell what of his ideas we've already beat down the bushes, tried to pursue, and unfortunately, didn't come up with anything. And some of them are still possible. The CTE kids are currently raising marsh doom grass on the town property behind us. I'm not sure if there's a profit revenue for it, but it's an educational process. So there's a lot of that stuff going on. We've investigated that. Part of my report, and I'll talk briefly, about why the solar canopy project is, is not going to provide cash flow. At this point, we've vetted that pretty extensively. So we have to give and continue to look at that. We discussed things like our sewage treatment plant is eligible to certify sewage treatment plant operators. If we could put a program together for that, we could provide that, staple them down, run their certification testing, and they can produce some pretty highly paid operators to operate sewage treatment plant. But we're continuing at the SAFER Committee to think way outside the box and every revenue source we can, and we're going to bring them to you one at a time, and anything that we can even bake a little bit, we're going to bring to you. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else they want to add to that discussion? I was going to have a more open discussion, but like I said, we spent a lot of time in the meeting.
Anybody's welcome to call me from the general public or from the committee and plant the idea, and we will put it on the agenda for the SAFER group to review and process. We do have another meeting coming up on September 26th that we can discuss anything that anybody has. Thank you.
For the March meeting day, are March meeting day conflicted with the spring concert? And I want to try to give deference to the spring concert. We've had cases where we conflicted with the spring concert and we've had people dashing to and fro and things like that. I think that I thought there was a good case to be able to move. So we would be proposing to move our meeting day to March the 6th. I think that actually moves us up in the schedule with the idea that we need to be voting budgets right around that time to meet, you know, our statutory mandates for towns. So we don't want to move back. We want to move forward. So anybody have any questions, comments, worries about that or any kind of bad conflicts or anything like that?
So that is the, it's the first Thursday. It's the one that is also a tax meeting.
Yes, somebody did raise that, which would, I mean, we might have to excuse you for.
Yeah, so that would be that.
I also, I still could miss the pass about maybe they could start a little bit earlier. They could start at like 4:30 or 5:00 and then be done by the time this starts.
Yeah, it was just, it's a lot of pressure on working parents and I don't, I don't mind us having our hand forced a little bit on getting our budget stuff in line. If we can give deference to, I'd love to.
Motion to move the 13th to the 6th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We had, I can't remember if it was a parent or somebody else write in and say, hey, cell phones are a giant distraction in the classroom. And there are plenty of districts that are banning their use within the classroom. And should we look at that as a district-wide policy? My understanding, at least from my kids at various times, is that at least some of the teachers have had classroom policies of no cell phones. And at times, perhaps everybody put their cell phones in a bin as they walk in and things like that. Tried to force that early on. And then probably the discipline sort of disappears as the time goes along. But I wanted to open up, I wanted to hear from the administration first on thoughts on having a cellphone policy or if there is a practice that we are already doing and that we could do more of. And Carissa's like, I don't want to get my phone.
So I asked one of our new teachers today, you know, in the first 20 days that you appear, I'd love to know, you know, if something's wrong, if something, you know, in your last district, you did better. And he goes, I have never been in a district where I have not seen a cellphone. So in six, five days, five days of school, he has not seen a cellphone. Our policy is that students have to keep it in their lockers. I have not seen one yet. So I do not have a concern about cell phones at the middle school level.
So that's been a, that has been a middle school policy, correct?
Correct.
I believe that's right. I think, I think my kids were more or less unreachable during the day.
That's good to hear.
And that that was really well enforced at the middle school on education.
The high school policy is a little different. They're a little bit older. They're allowed to use their phones during passing time and during their lunchtime, but they are not allowed to have their phones during instructional time. That includes the classroom, the hallway, the offices. So if they're asking to leave, to go to the bathroom, they're not supposed to have their phones. They can either keep them in their backpacks. Our kids don't really use lockers at the high school level. It's the weirdest thing to me. Or teachers have like a phone storage bin on their desk. So some teachers will collect them there. They are allowed to use them in class for academic purposes at the teacher discretion. You know, there are some like Quizlets and apps that they'll use or if they're doing, you know, special projects where they're making movies or taking pictures. Sometimes it's easier than using their Chromebook. This was the hill we committed to dining on last year as a, as a staff. So at the beginning of last school year, we hammered in our cellphone policy to students and families. And across the board, our staff were consistent with enforcing our policy. I took on all the cellphone referrals. I took that off of our assistant principal's plates. And there were, you know, some frequent flyers who, you know, we spent a lot of policy time together, but you know, by their second or third offense, I was collecting their phone and mom and dad had to come and pick it up. I got to know a few parents pretty close last year. But for the most part, I mean, the kids, it's enforced, the kids follow it. We had a couple of different working groups throughout last year where we invited students and staff to kind of speak to the, what they thought was a new policy, but really we were just enforcing the policy. You know, our students that sat on that panel really commented on, you know, they don't love it, but they don't feel like they're missing out on anything because they know their friends also aren't on their phones at the same time. And then last spring, we had a couple of tweaks we wanted to make after living it for a year. So last spring, I presented those handful of changes to you that were approved just to sort of like really specify what the discipline follow-up would be for students who are using their phones when they're not supposed to. But it's, it's been great. Our staff did a great job of being consistent. They've already started off strong with that consistency this year. I mean, Carissa, maybe you can speak to a little bit as a student?
As a student, I definitely, I think ever since, because I was there before the cellphone policy went in and after, there was a very large change for sure. And all the staff, I've seen them be, like even in my classes with like seniors, they're still like really strict with it. Like they'll give referrals and stuff like that. And the only class I've really used my phone in is art to like get like photos and take photos of art. So it's really turned into a non-problem.
And I think because of the policy at the middle school, right, like last year's freshmen, this year's sophomores, that, like, this is nothing new for them. This is like, you get to use it during passing time. This is great. So they're a bit more trained. Their current juniors and seniors, that is the biggest impact on. So within two years, no one's going to know any difference. So it's been good.
Go ahead.
Obviously, they have an impact. It can be used for cheating or Googling the answer to a test, too. But I was curious how you regulate the Apple Watch?
Anyway, I mean, teachers are pretty cognizant of if kids are looking at it, you know, if they can't have them on during their test, testing. You know, I mean, there are so many ways that kids can cheat. If they want to cheat, they're going to find a way. But our teachers are pretty savvy. You know, our, our exams aren't multiple choice questions, right? Children or students have to demonstrate their understanding through project-based assessment or writing. So it's not as easy to...
So the Apple Watch, not necessarily a policy?
Oh, it is. This part it is. They can't have them. And they have to be in their locker or I take them.
Thank you. My sister-in-law's a teacher and she says, it's hilarious how many students think they're getting worried about something. I see them... they're getting a pair of something, and I see them. She's like, they're looking at your watch. What?
And just so everyone's aware, policy isn't just the formal policies that we adopt in the policy manual. Annually, the principals of our buildings come to us with recommendations for their handbook, and we vote upon the handbook. So by default, that becomes our policies as, as the school committee. And similarly with when we do strategic planning, if the strategic plan is presented to the school committee and we vote to accept that strategic plan, that becomes policy as well. So not everything is the alphabet soup to read policy situation. So these are formally our policies too, by the fact that we voted upon the handbook last year.
So any worries or further discussions about where we are? Does anybody feel like this need to adjust or change anything with that?
Happy for the information though, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, let's hear your principals' report.
I would like to honor one of our teachers, Lori Parker, who has been teaching for 30 years, many of them in Silver Lake. She's a math teacher and she's retiring on September 19th. We have a slew of new teachers in many different disciplines, but I will start with somebody who will never replace her, but certainly has our classroom right now. That's Ally Mott. We welcome her to seventh grade math. We welcome Carla Estrada to our Spanish position. Liam Sweeney is our new wellness, our wellness teacher, but he is also a coach in Silver Lake. Erica Swift to special education, Chris Davis to science, Sam Pendergast ELA. And thanks to all of you, Lana Treshko is now full-time at the middle school. I also wanted to just bring attention to, you know, the front of the school. The Amity ambassadors came in August, August 22nd, to help organize the opening ceremonies for the school, prepare an opening assembly. They, they organized and practiced how to do announcements, all done by former Amity ambassadors, thanks to Ms. Gill and some sophomores that came over. They did it better than I would ever teach them. It was amazing. And they also decorated the front windows, which you can see when you come in. I also want to just recognize the custodial work this summer. It was a team effort, but the whole entire first floor, I'm going to say it again, the whole entire first floor was painted. The gym floor, thanks to the SAFER Committee and their support, was also refinished, sanded all the way down to the hardwood. And if you go in there, it looks like a brand-new gymnasium. So thank you for all of your support and for the teamwork in our building. We're very proud. That is my report.
Kayla?
I have a little bit more. Apologies in advance. We welcome some new staff members this year as well. Megan Willis and Olivia Sutherland are new math teachers in our department. Elizabeth McKay joins us, our curriculum team, as our special ed coordinator. Mike Lob returns to Silver Lake. He is taking over our pathways program. We welcome Christina White and Keith McKay in our science department. Matt Albernaz, Josh Raymond, and Michelle Scorio in our CTE department. Zachary Acubian is our new full-time ESL teacher. We're thrilled, so thank you again for your support with that position. And Rachel McGuire is out, she's going to get her year maternity leave, so we have Deft Quatro filling in for her for the year. As you know, we had to make some cuts to our budget last year that impacted our two-day freshman orientation program. So we shrunk it into a two-hour program that relied solely on volunteers. We had several staff members who came in, our guidance counselors, our data coaches helped us out, our coordinators. And we also had a ton of student volunteers. Our NHS members came in, led tours, and did like a student panel. And the weirdest thing, all summer long, I kept getting emails from students that were like, hey, can we help out with freshman orientation? Just random kids who weren't part of a club or an organization. And so we had about 15 additional students who came at Sullivan, had siblings who were rising freshmen. But I just, it was every week I got a different request and they'd come on in. So it was, it was overall, all things considered, it was a solid two hours. We packed a lot in for the students. I do have four donation requests for you tonight. Would it be helpful just to stay all of them?
Sure.
Okay, great. So two are in the CTE department. One is from Hingham Lumber Company out of Hingham. They would like to donate building materials at an approximate value of $3,000 for our carpentry program. Christian Xanner IV would like to donate a 2006 Ford Expedition for our automotive program. The Kingston Public Library, and all of these documents are in your shared drive as well, has a slew of books they would like to donate for us. And then I have my yearly donation as my graduation gift to the library. And then our PTO would like to donate just under $300 to our Unified Wellness Program to help with the costs of resources and materials for our new program. Obviously, thank you notes would be sent to all of the donors if you're.
I have a motion to accept the.
Motion to accept the donations as described by Principal Gill.
Second.
No saying. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then I have an out-of-safety field request on behalf of Ms. Kelly DePascua and Greg Dubey. This is for members of our selective choir and band who would be given the opportunity to perform at Carney Hall. The trip would be from March 29th to April 3rd, which is a little bit wonky. I think they leave on a Sunday and come back on a Wednesday, but that's because they don't want high schoolers performing at Carney Hall on a Saturday night, apparently. So they gave us a Tuesday. And then in addition to that, we would have an opportunity to see a Broadway show, visit some historical sites as part of that experience and the package. The cost for students is pretty cheap, it's about $1,800, but it would be offset by fundraising. And any student who is accepted to perform wouldn't be denied the trip based on finances. We would make sure that they have that support.
Yeah, just ask a question. How many students would be going to Silver Lake?
I think we can bring about 40 kids, if I remember correctly. So they have to like apply for it, be selected. And then I think even if they don't sing, they can be like accompanying band members for some of them, so we'll try to get as many as we can.
I have a motion to approve the out of district, out of state.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a question. You said it's a Tuesday that they'll be performing. How many days of school will they miss and will be?
They'll miss Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
And that's obviously an excuse because it's.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we actually, they'll be back in time for athletics and other programs on Wednesday. That's their travel, they'll leave that morning.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. The Silver Lake Hall of Fame Committee reached out this summer. They would like permission to fundraise for and create a memorial to be placed on campus honoring the late Buddy Tevens, who attended Silver Lake. Unfortunately, he passed a year ago. He is the winningest coach at Dartmouth. He's in the Silver Lake Hall of Fame, he's class of 74. I asked for some more information. They had like some samples of other memorials, so they're not quite sure what they want to do yet, or what the funding would look like. But I told them the beginning stages of that process obviously would be to come to this group first. I can ask them for more information if it's too premature to take a vote, because I'm not sure what it would be yet. If it's a tree, if it's a plaque, if it's a brick walkway, I'm not sure. But I told them we had a meeting tonight. I was hopeful to get more information, but I haven't received any additional yet, so that could be it.
I'd love to, I'd like to hear more information about what they would like to do in order to vote on. Generally speaking, in favor of the concept, if you don't know American football very well, Buddy Tevens was not just a great coach at Dartmouth, he actually changed the game across America. His practices of how he managed his team to reduce injuries and head injuries and things like that have generally speaking been adopted everywhere across American football, which is pretty amazing.
I do have another program of studies requests to update. We talked about this last July to, as we continue to try to align the course offerings and the level offerings that we have in Spanish with the ones we offer in French. We are looking to add French II honors to the program of studies, very similar to what I explained in July to the committee, those of you who were on that call. Again, we have teachers who are willing to teach both in the same class, are taking on that additional prep work, so that students who would like to take it at a higher level would be able to. But I would need your approval to put that officially into our program of studies. And I did put the language, there's a copy of that. Well, I didn't put it in there.
Can't finish. Worked together.
Is that for this current year?
Yeah.
So someone would be upgrading in class essentially?
Yeah. And then moving forward, the idea would be, again, it would be separate classes moving forward.
I have one question. I was reading through this earlier, and there's repeated mentions of AP French. This might be jumping a bit a little bit. Is that planned to be added to the program of studies for next year or further along in the future?
Yeah, I'm hoping that by next year it'll all be.
Sorry, I'm really excited to hear from you.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Nope. I didn't know that.
Any further questions for Michael about motion to approve the update to the course of things?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. We're almost, thanks for your patience, everyone. So I just wanted to bring something to your attention regarding MIA eligibility. And this was put on our new AD, Rick Swanson's radar and my radar recently, when we had a student who was previously enrolled in district, signed, did spring registration, or excuse me, registration for fall sports in the spring when they were enrolled here, and then over the summer ended up transferring out and into a virtual high school. And so we sort of had this, wait a minute, are they eligible to still play football for us? Or is this considered a different school district and therefore they're not eligible? So we did a little bit of digging. The first few pieces of information that we found, we thought it would have to be a school committee approval, but then we found the MIA language, which states that Commonwealth Virtual School students residing in Massachusetts are eligible to apply to the superintendent of schools of the school district in which the student resides, and if approved, shall be able to participate in interschool, interscholaristic athletics within the district. So I, this is just a point of information I wanted to share with you so that you're aware, if you got this question, or if the scenario presents itself again, moving forward, we will make sure to communicate to these families that they would need to counsel them to email Dr. Prue requesting permission and obviously copying the athletic director on that email. But per the MIA, it is permissible, but I just wanted to share that with you in case someone says, you know, this kid doesn't go to Silver Lake, why are they playing on the team? So I learned something in this summer.
I have two questions, like along this line. Is it true that if a child, say, attends a charter school that does not have a specific sport, they could also attend this district that they're from? I've heard that before. And also homeschooling children are also eligible?
Homeschool, absolutely. That I'm certain on yet. I think there are some, there's a couple of layers to the charter school students. I think it depends on if they have athletic programs or not. I would have to dig up that, have to go deeper into the MIA handbook to confirm, but I can, I can look into that for the next meeting too.
It's on the finest meeting, I actually mentioned it to you before.
No, it's a great, it's a great question. I mean, these aren't usual scenarios for us, but that was stumped, it was like a stump to DJ question this summer, but yeah.
So a student that's enrolled in a virtual program or homeschool, is, are students subject to grades being affected whether or not allowed to participate in sports? They get suspended for a while period until their grades come up. How do you monitor that in the case of?
So they have to, they have to submit their grades to us?
They submit that to you?
Yeah, they have to demonstrate eligibility in the same way.
Okay.
Yeah, so eligibility for us, it's not like week by week, right? So eligibility for fall sports is based on your year-end transcript, grades. Winter is based on term one, and spring is based on term two.
I love a plan.
Yeah. Yep. All right. Our school resource officer, Officer Allen, for the last few years has, he's developed a lot of great relationships with our students who may otherwise struggle to make connections with someone in our, in our building. And he's very heavily involved in the boxing program. He actually competes himself throughout the year. And he has, over the years, made great connections with some of our students who just needed a different outlet, and they've joined the gym that he goes to. And so he has worked with the new Kingston chief to try to actually formalize this program. And so the Kingston Police is looking to launch the Kingston Police Boxing Club, which would be run by KPD, would be run by Officer Allen, and it would be exclusive to Silver Lake students. It wouldn't be open to anybody else. And so over the summer, they did a lot of work, and these documents are in your shared folder as well, to get this up and running. There are other high schools that have similar clubs as well. And so I shared sort of a medical release and consent form that our attorney has reviewed as well. The idea, we have a, there's a local boxing gym right down the road that Officer Allen is connected with, and they would like to donate free gym time for our students to use under Officer Allen's supervision. And so I wanted to share this with you, you know, we would be looking to share this information with our students and share the flyer and information, obviously. Russ did make one suggestion that we update the language to make sure that like Silver Lake, this isn't a Silver Lake sponsored event. There is language in here that makes sure that we're not, we're held harmless, we're not liable for anything, neither is Kingston Police or the town of Kingston. So Officer Allen's going to update that. But once that is updated, I'm looking for your approval to share this information with our students and families.
So are you looking for approval to that or are you waiting to?
I'd say approval pending the upcoming recommendations, if you trust me, that I will go for you. I can run it by Russ one more time too before I say.
Questions? Discussion?
So we can get it started before the end.
Should we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Kingston Police Boxing Club flyer and distribution pending the updates from Russ.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Thank you. All right, and I'm excited to introduce, reintroduce Krista Smith. She's our student representative this year, elected by her peers at the high school. She's going to give a quick little update tonight. We're excited to have her. She came to a few meetings last year. All right, where's yours?
Hi. The main thing we have going on in student bodies, we're going to be hosting CMAS. For those of you, sorry, I'm just going to get the date up.
September 26th.
September 26th, thank you. So that's going to be a bunch of schools are coming together and we're, it's like leadership workshops, a lot of it, you're going to learn a lot of leadership skills, so everyone's very excited about that. We also have the first football game tomorrow, actually, and we have Spirit Week coming up too, so we've been busy planning that. And we do have an in-school student council retreat that is also coming up, so we can help plan for CMAS because it is a lot of work. NHS induction is October 8th, so that is exciting for anyone that's getting inducted into that. That's, I'm excited going up.
Do you have to make any schedule adjustments because of Triple E for football or soccer and everything like that?
So typically like the town would let us know if they made that recommendation. Yeah, we followed their guidance. Thank you, Krista. So a CMAS, I feel like you're underselling it a little bit. There, our student council is hosting 700 students from the state of Massachusetts. So like the student council members from all Massachusetts high schools will be coming to campus. It's our early dismissal day. So they'll spend the morning in the auditorium and cafeteria doing some bigger presentations, and then the afternoon they'll break into workshops throughout the building. So we hosted it probably about 10 years ago at this point. Hannah Seelag is the CMAS president. She's one of our senior students, which is a pretty big deal. It's the first time a student from Silver Lake has had that position, so she's the head, the president of all of student councils in the state. So it's a pretty cool opportunity for us, and our student council officers are doing a lot to plan for this day, so we're, leadership in action, it's pretty cool. So, all right, I'm going to talk. Thank you.
Regarding Triple E, Kingston School Community, the Board has selected last year for an appointment, and they said any guidance will be distributed by the Kingston Board Health Director, and there is current note.
You said there was a boxing club. I was thinking Graham, when he was in eighth grade, tried to start Fight Club in the long jump pit, and his track coaches wouldn't let him do it. I was like, if you succeed.
The first rule of Fight Club is, we don't want to talk about Fight Club.
All right. Sarah, I think you're up.
Thank you, Chairman Lawson, school community members for having me here. I'm going to start off by apologizing because this is going to be a completely different show than in the past. One of my goals last year, when I came in, was to make the transition from Christine Healy to myself as soon as possible. And so my financial report, I'm trying to model after her financial report. And I'm going to start tonight by telling you a story that's going to explain why it won't look like that anymore. And I'm going to talk about football helmets. So the MIAA requires the football helmets to be inspected and reconditioned or replaced every year. And I have put two things into your, um, into the folder for the financial report. One of them is the document that you're used to seeing, and one of them is the chart of accounts for the, from the Department of Education about how we're supposed to report things. So imagine my surprise in the spring when I found out that Principal Gil, who was a rock star.
Wow, thanks.
Was budgeting for helmet conditioning under an account, um, it was a 4,000 account because it was called Maintenance of Equipment Contractual Services. Maintenance of Equipment Contractual Services. And, and according to the Department of Education, Maintenance of Equipment, which is a 4,000 account, given all of this, housekeeping activities relating to the physical plant and maintenance activities for grounds, buildings, and equipment. Expenditures classified as 4,000 expenditure must not exceed per people project dollar limit for extraordinary maintenance, that's like booms and, um, HBAC units, um, or for non-instructional equipment. So football helmets actually belong in, uh, an account that would have the code 3510, which if I relate to you, it says athletics. Record only the expenditures from appropriated funds used to support athletics, including, and then there's a whole list, but the second thing on the list is contractual services. There isn't currently a contractual services line for athletics in our chart of accounts. And so this equipment, given the description of the account, Principal Gil put in the best place it could go because there didn't exist another place. So one of the things that has happened is you as a school committee, and the school committee prior to you, for however many years, were looking at a year-to-year-to-year comparison of things. And my reports are going to look a bit different because I have to move some things around. So what I'm going to tell you is football helmets conditioning was budgeted for, but when we spend the money this year, I have to create that line and spend it out of the correct space. That way, when it's time to do the end-of-year report, it will take me a reasonable amount of time and I can submit it on time, not forever, which it might take me this year. That's the first thing I wanted to say. If you were to look at the report, the financial report that is in your folder for tonight, you would notice at the bottom of page four that goes over on to the top of page five, you'll notice that there's, under the, um, budget balance, there's some significant negative numbers there. If you look over on the left-hand side for what those expenditures are, there's, there was a naming convention at Silver Lake that when you created an account, everything was always capital letters. I'm telling you, everything I create is going, because of the changes that need to be made, I'm going to put in lowercase letters. So you can see that these accounts that I created for the, for the extended school year, professional staff and support staff, I'll be creating an account for extended school year supplies. That money had been paid for out of the revolving, the preschool revolving account in previous years. For this year, it was budgeted and I didn't have these account numbers yet. So the money was budgeted in a tuition line to 920. I just haven't moved, haven't had the time to move it into the appropriate line. So things are going to, things are going to look different and, and my report is going to be different because, you know, at some point I'm going to come and say, okay, I've had the time to move the things to the right place now, so you can see that we, we spent $9,000 at the integrated preschool for staff for extended school year, and we had budgeted $9,000 for that. So I have the, the money that's been spent, but I'm going to have to move money from one part of the budget column to the other part of the budget column as time makes itself available. Any questions for my new strange financial report? The other big deal which I'm so excited about is that we've made some significant changes in the business office and how we do things, and I can tell you that the number, this number on the bottom right-hand corner, which is the unexpended budget balance to date, is the actual balance. So everything is being tracked in our financial software system and I'm going to come to you for meetings and be able to talk to you about things, and there's not, not going to be any surprises, which is a big step forward for us. Second part of my report for tonight, um, I apologize, I put this on the agenda and I don't 100% have all of the, uh, the paperwork back yet, but our FY23 audit, which was the fiscal year that closed on June 30th, 2023, four months before I started working here, that audit is complete and, um, has been signed off on. I just don't have the final documents to share with you yet. I had hoped I was going to have those, and then we had a long weekend for the Labor Day holiday, and then the auditor had a conference he had to attend, which I'm sure was riveting. Um, so I just want to remind you that we have three audits over the course of the year. There's the audit of our books as the regional school district, just like Kingston is audited and Plington is audited. So the books are audited, and then there's an audit of federal grants over $750,000, and there's the audit of the end-of-year report. So this FY23 audit that, that is complete, that I will definitely have for you next time, is the audit that goes to the Department of Revenue. The audit that goes to the federal government, the single audit for the federal grants is complete. I have the corrective action plan in the folder for you, if you'd like me to talk about that tonight. It's going to look amazingly similar to the corrective action plan from January because we couldn't, I couldn't make any changes between FY22 and FY23 because I wasn't here yet. And, um, we won't be able to see any significant changes until FY24. Any questions about item two or item three? Moving on to high school building envelope bid and award. So this is a project that was part of our FY24 capital. Um, the funding for this was our, um, was last year's capital money, which there was no really real progress made on FY24 capital between July and January. So when we entered into the agreement with the House Doctor, with Habib and Associate Architects, we have been going full steam ahead on many things. So with the building envelope study for the middle school and the high school, we, um, put together the drawings and the specs back in the beginning of July. We went out to bid on July 31st. The bids were due on August 22nd. When the bids come in, they then go to Habib and Associates Architects for review, and they have sent me the letter that I put in your, uh, folder for tonight, which is their recommendation. So they, we've received one, two, three, we've received five bids for the building envelope study, and Commercial Masonry Corporation had the lowest bid, including the base bid and the two alternates, and the amount we had budgeted for that was $100,000 in the FY24 capital plan.
That's what we had budgeted.
And so this meets our requirements for the bid. So I am seeking your approval to award a contract to Commercial Masonry Corporation for the envelope repairs at the middle school and high school.
So move.
Second.
Follow.
Just a quick question. Do we know who Maggie will start? Um, I have the, this is the, the schedule from Habib and Associates, and it's always a lot of background stuff. So on here it says, "Contract awarded September 11th. Mobilization construction starts September 30th. Substantial completion November 50th." Thank you. So this is.
All right. Um, the rest on the table. All in favor? All right. Any other, Ms. Karen?
Many of you. Flip the page on the agenda. I'm still at the top of the next page. Uh, prior year fiscal bills impossible vote. I have two types of bills. Again, new school business manager changes. I say FY25, and, I'm sorry, FY24 ends on June 30th, and I presented to you, uh, encumbered funds that we set aside to spend on things that we knew about in FY25, that we were going to spend FY24 money on. And there are bills that have come into us since July 1st. Um, we have a bill for $3,000 to Stoneman, Chandler, and Miller that came into the business office on July 30th, and that's not my favorite one. My favorite one is the transportation company that has been sending bills to Christine Healy since January and called the office at the beginning of August and said, "How come you haven't paid us?" I can't pay bills I don't know about. Did they email them? They were emailing bills to an email address that had an out-of-office response that said, "I've retired, please send the bill here, please contact Sarah Hickey." So, and they weren't contacting me. And they weren't contacting me until a phone call in August.
Yeah, thank you.
So it is my understanding, and you're going to hear this conversation again for those of you that are, um, on other school committees, because there are some things that have come in that are considered prior fiscal year bills. At a regional level, we need to pay prior fiscal year bills out of E and D we have. At a town level, prior year fiscal bills generally get paid out of, um, free cash or some other funding source if the town has it. Uh, but what I'm looking for, and my computer keeps falling asleep on me, is to pay, hang on, now my password's incorrect. Uh, $18,330 in prior fiscal year bills, of which $3,000 is to our attorneys, Stoneman, Chandler, and Miller, and $15,330 is to WCL Transportation.
Gordon, I can ask a question on that. Are any of those ladies? No. So they didn't, they didn't?
Sarah, did you say we're paying them out of E and D? Which is our equivalent to free cash, yes. Can we do that? I didn't think we could.
Yeah, hold it, I'm sure.
I thought any money moved out of E and D had to be voted to town. Am I wrong on that? I don't think I am. Jason, you want to throw up, I think, but?
I just, I don't want to say anything that could be misconstrued in this circumstance. We have had a prior incident before where we had a boiler go mid-year and we did draw from E and D for a critical physical plan. We do need to notify the towns of the vote, and they are allowed to then hold special town meetings if they choose to. If they decline to, that is an affirmative vote on behalf of the municipalities to go along with us. So we did reach out to the select boards of the three towns when we had that emergency several years ago. I would say this would be akin to it. We're not increasing our operational budget. We're paying prior year's obligations with the E and D funds. So I think it takes a two-thirds majority vote of us, which I think is just academic at this point, but we should also communicate it out to, uh, the select boards of the three towns.
Question. Do we have the option to pay it any other way?
If you have a bag of gold somewhere that I don't know about, I would love to hear about it. Um, it, it's not an appropriate use of any of our grant funding? We don't have a revolving account that's?
Transportation.
I'm sorry?
But it's a transportation charge, right? For which kind of, uh, special ed transportation?
Homeless transportation.
Homeless transportation. No, there's no grant that is available. There's no other source that we could, based on the fact that we hadn't received this request to pay till after our fiscal year.
Mr. Chair, through you.
Mark. I think our business director has identified the proper source of funding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to use E and D funds to pay the past year's bills with the request that we convey this information to the select boards of the three towns.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a quick question. Um, who will be doing the community? I just want to make sure it actually gets done, which is just the chair. Thanks, Gordon.
I will run that up and send it to you.
Okay. All right. Um, all in favor?
All right. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Fran Reese?
Hi, thank you. So we have, um, the new IEP implemented. We had a new, and YEP platforms implemented. Um, a little bit of the thugs. We made a Google form for all the worries and concerns people might have had with the new process. And we've been about 12 people, and we're going around to different schools and having open hours of support with each of the teachers. General education teachers at the high school were, um, trained yesterday afternoon on the new IEP. Um, the parent meeting for CPAC will also receive the training. They received the training last year, and they'll get a follow-up training this, this fall. We have, um, the tiered focus monitoring process, which is the CHANCE process, but it's not, it's not, um, it's from, gee, am I, did I do something wrong?
No.
Oh, my. We have the CHANCE process.
I keep laughing and then we can't look at each other. Like, stop laughing. Apologize.
The CHANCE process for the tiered focus mon- The CHANCE process for the tiered focus monitoring will be coming this year. And we've got a parent survey for after IEP meetings coming up as well. We are going to have a budget for starting next month, because we're only into the first couple of schools, where you'll get a report for all of the unbudgeted financials every month. That's it.
Can I ask a question regarding the PD that was done for the new IEPs? Can you please just, I guess, express to the public that this is desigmented, this isn't something that we rolled out in the district for the new IEPs?
Teachers received, the education team has received training all last year to prepare for this year. And then they have additional training they should have as well.
Okay. All right. Dr. Cooper?
Hi, everyone. I'm happy to be here. Thanks for having me. I'm excited to join Silver Lake. So this is my first report, and I will make it thorough but brief. A few things that we've been working on. One of the things that teachers participated, new teachers participated, was the Studying Skilful Teacher Course, which they spent four days in August with research for better teaching, getting professional development in good teaching strategies. So that, that occurred in August. The second piece is I've been working on the subtitle grades, Title 1, 2, 3, and 4, which helped find lots of different things in the different districts. So that's been something I've been working on. And the other piece is the new teacher orientation, which happened on August 21st at the high school. All new teachers came for a day. We were able to introduce the administrators and spend time talking about our strategy for district improvement. And then we were able to go on a bus ride throughout all of the towns, which was really helpful and informative for me also. So that was the 21st. And then we've also been working on the strategy for district improvement. So what I mean by that is our leadership team met on August 19th. We worked on each one of the goals. We worked on action steps, and we worked on individual plans for each school. So that's work that's happened. And the last piece just happened Tuesday, which was a professional development day. All of the elementary teachers, K through 6, from throughout the district, went to KIS, where we worked on alignment, curriculum alignment, in particular, we looked at regards to curriculum alignment, looking at the standards, looking at item analysis from preliminary MCAS reports, and also connecting with our own curriculum that we use in the district and making changes to lessons if needed. At the high school and middle school, the morning was spent at each one of the schools around their own professional development, connected with their up-school improvement plans. And then they spent the time in the afternoon in departments, which I was able to go around and go to as many department meetings as I could go to. And they were also working on aligning and spoken sequence with their curriculum. And that is the short story on that day, but it was a really useful day. And I was super pressed with the high level of focus and work, hard work that everybody was putting in on that day. So there'll be more work that we're going to do on November 5th, and I'll be working with the principals and curriculum coordinators on that to help plan those days. So that's in a nutshell, that's all. Thank you.
Questions?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Dr. Prue?
So over the summer, we had three leadership institute days where we reviewed our strategy for district improvement and focused on goals and setting goals for the upcoming school year, both as a district at the building level and as, as leaders in planning for our opening day welcome for the district as well. In August, we had a training with DuCorrie Law on the new Title IX expectations and regulations. And we were also very busy hiring a number of new staff. In terms of district-wide leadership, as you know, Dr. Clifford joined us this summer, Athletic Director Rick Swanson, Elementary Curriculum Coordinator Brian DeSantis, HR Director Liz Brito, Integrated Pre-K Principal Sarah Chipp, Math Coordinator Dan Correa, Special Education Coordinator Elizabeth McKay. So those are all new faces that we certainly would love to introduce you to as particular topics become pertinent to you and your level of interest. But I wanted you to be aware of those, those new hires as well. I wanted to thank Dr. Pam Reese for her opening day presentation on the new 504 and IEP requirements. And she presented a nice overview to staff and then also provided additional training to our, our special education staff the following day, throughout the day. And I think, I think that was it. I think I covered everything.
Any questions for Dr. Prue? Okay, SLEA.
Just real quick, I promise. Good evening. My name is Jessica Drew, and I'm a Spanish teacher at the high school. I'm also the newly elected president of the Silver Lake Education Association, and I would just like to take a quick minute of your time this evening. It is an honor to represent my colleagues within the Silver Lake Education Association or the SLEA. Our teachers, librarians, counselors, nurses, parists, custodians, cafeteria workers, and secretaries have worked tirelessly, tirelessly to start the 24, 25 school year off on an excellent foot alongside our building admin. We are enjoying getting to know our students as we begin this year's journey. As educators, we take very seriously our responsibility to reach all students and guide them to grow more than they ever thought possible. For us being a part of the world of education is more than a job, it's a passion and an identity. Our role as educators, as experts in what we do, is to get to know our students and help them hone the skills and knowledge that they need to thrive in the community. The role of our union is to ensure that our educators have what they need to do that. We seek transparency, collaboration, and partnership with the district, school committee, and community to solidify brighter futures for our students. We seek to be members of the team that makes decisions that have historically been made without us. These decisions affect how our educators are best able to run their classrooms. We look forward to the opportunity to partner together to make Silver Lake an even stronger community for all of our students. Thank you for your time this evening.
Admin review.
I think we'll do an update in executive session.
Okay. CTE?
No update, moving.
We have on the agenda drivers that increase the vote.
That it will be safe.
It was undefeated. Okay, so I'll cover that there. All right. I think we already talked about our main correspondence, which we've been to ask about cell phone policies, so we've covered that. Jason, you want to cover our legislative update?
I think last week spoke, I gave a fairly substantial update on the state budget. Over the summer, I spent more time working with MAVA than MASCE. MAVA is the Mass Association of Vocational Administrators. There is a bill currently in the Senate side of the House, looking at potentially doing a blind lottery for CTE admissions. MAVA and MASCE stand firmly against this. We were lucky enough to have Senate Chair Rodriguez of the Senate Ways and Means Committee, the second most powerful senator in the state, bring us together at the table with Senator Cronin, who is proposing the legislation. We've had several long, thorough meetings over the summer discussing the pros and cons of different positions. The ultimate goal is to increase funding for CTE programs, so every single student in the Commonwealth will have access to a seat in the CTE program if they so choose and desire. Currently, there are deserts where there's no options for students. We all know Pembroke's dilemma with not having access to CTE programming, since they pulled out of Silver Lake and weren't eligible for South Shore. And there's also some concerns about who gets in and how they get it, and the equity issues behind it. So those conversations are ongoing. All bills that were filed during the last legislative cycle, which is a two-year cycle, that weren't passed, died, including our two bills looking to increase the amount of monies we were able to hold back for extraordinary special ed costs. We were looking to increase that by 2% of next school spending to 5. And we're also looking to create the ability to hold back funds for regional assessments. Here's where it's low in our town, we could hold some money in reserve for a year where we see a bump. They didn't die in committee. They actually went to a third reading, which basically means they were about to be passed, but they ran out of time. So the plan is to refile them in January, February of this legislative cycle and see if we can get them through. With this vocational bill, the same thing happened to it. It made it through quite a few readings and was borderline going to get passed, so we need to keep our eye on this. It could deeply affect how we admit kids into the CTE program, but also how much input our educators have on what shops and rotations students are actually placed in. That could become blind as well under some proposed language. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question? When do we need to be watchful for that?
You and I don't have to worry about anything until after the elections, because they're all busy doing that right now.
So after November?
Yeah, the business of the state is pretty much shut down until all of these things happen, and then the swearing-in process. So the new legislative cycle kicks off in early January. I will let you know to be ready. Yep.
We'll do an update in executive session.
First meeting is October 3rd, so nothing to report yet, except that they did send out some email that said that they had a smooth and positive opening to the school year.
Policy. So I guess technically the chair of policy. We haven't had a meeting since reorg has happened. We do need to get together to codify the Title IX changes and law into our policy. So I'll work with Karen to set up a time for all policy people to get together. But I would love to take that hat off. I appreciate how many of you have taken chairmanships and subcommittees away from me in the past two years. It's been great to have a team approach and not have it all concentrated in one little area. And this is another one I'd like to take off. I'm happy to be part of the committee and continue to work. So I'll work with Karen to put that together.
The guy that's not here.
Can we make a motion? Yeah, right?
That's the way it works.
Right?
Yeah.
So I think that's the policy update. We do have to do some Title IX work, and we'll get, we'll get a meeting on the agenda to reorg and do some work.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you. Appreciate a little bit of bearing. We've had two meetings this summer since the last time we met. Both of them have been productive, and I just want to have a chance to update you on some of the issues. The solid panel that's on the agenda first, we looked at a out-of-state company from Pennsylvania that was doing one locally in Kingston, and it promises prayers and some numbers that for $150,000 to $150,000 revenue stream that we could see, went back to the company that did the initial resource search with us. And they had responded with a letter that's in the folder, I believe, if not, I can get it, that indicated that what the out-of-state company doesn't aware of is the different in particularities. And one of those is the fact we have power purchase already covering our electric needs at current. And at some point, whenever Sarah can get caught up and weigh down the list on the things that she's got to do, we could look at the power purchase agreement, and as soon as she understands it better, she'd probably explain it to us. But anyway, we need to, it wasn't fiscally sound to go forward. We'd have to have a host person to take the electricity. We produce on our lease agreement, and it would have to be some other municipality or some affordable housing or something like that that we'd have to figure out. It's very complicated, so we're taking that one off the agenda a lot. School zone discussion and possible vote. So the town of Kingston initiated as part of the safety audit that we did, one of the items was a school zone. And we didn't have authority to have a school zone in the past, because high schools did not qualify, and our middle school is at too far back from the street to qualify. We went through this when we built the schools some, almost 20 years ago. We pursued it all along, but thanks to Selectman Kim Ember, who did some further research, unbeknownst to the town of Kingston or this, this member here, the state changed the rules and allows high schools now to be qualified for school zones. So the town of Kingston took the initiative upon themselves to move forward to put a school zone in place. They've done some research, the signage that's required, courses, mandates, and recommendations, and we're trying to define which ones which right now, of how to put a school zone together in, in front of our schools. And it would basically be a flashing sign, speed limit, whatever, when flashing. The signs, some $15,000 apiece, bringing the budget up to about $60,000 that nobody has actually been funded for, including the school or the town. So they're looking for different funding sources. Some of the ARPA money that we returned may be available to reapply for in this, from the district did return almost $100,000. And we're hoping that we can tap into that conversation with Keith Vicki, town administrator from Kingston today, indicated that he had found all but about $10,000 to $20,000 of the money he needs to try to put this into effect. Those of you interested can tune into the Kingston Selectments Meeting on the 24th of September, where they'll be discussing it further, and hopefully it'll come to fruition. What I'd like to do as possible vote is just today to vote our support for the replacement of a school zone in, in front of the school, just as an addendum item. We're not required, it would be obviously, we could support that. One of the ways I suggested to save funding would be to have a school zone in this linear along Route 27 and have signs that just said, "Approaching school zone" on Lake Street and Station Street. And that would save us two very expensive signs. The state guidelines, however, don't seem to indicate that without further research. That amendment is being considered, but they'd rather follow the guidelines through litigation that may result from us putting a school zone into effect that didn't meet guidelines. So that's, that's a school zone thing. So I'd like to motion, make a motion that we vote a support of a school zone along Pembroke Street and be effective morning and afternoon during our times that the schools get a rabbi on the party.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a question. There's a speed limit sign in front of the admin building. Is that not a school speed sign?
That sign I highlighted, it was in effect for a temporary school zone at one point, and then it was never taken down. So it's not enforceable at this point.
But we already have one sign.
And, right, but then it's not a flashing light sign, and the times that were reported, first of all, I don't think anybody can actually read that sign, even if you're going 10 miles an hour, because there's a lot of, lot of verbiage on it. But anyway, it may be integrated into part of it or replaced. I asked that question.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right. No county again, Karen.
All right, so the other safety issue was brought up and has been highlighted over the summer. There was another accident at Pembroke Lake Station intersection with the town of Kingston, and I want to specifically thank Highway Superintendent Paul Basler for all his help in increasing site distances. The town of Kingston had permission from neighbors to go onto private property and trim trees and cut that and mow lawns and get things done. And the Highway Superintendent, private school study, was able to clear out significant site distance from Station Street, looking up to the right, so that the parties can see each other. And they are still working on enforcement. Police chief has indicated that our resource officers and additional officers will be out, particularly during the time schools come, arriving into party. The intersection was identified in the top 10 things that Kingston has asked the state to address. I am not sure exactly where that placement was, but it is in the top 10, and I was told that the list would be pursued by the town of Kingston, asking the state to move forward. The roundabout idea is still on the table. We're still looking for a way to get that funded. Certain research, research has to be done in, in the process to be eligible for federal grants, and the town of Kingston did not feel that we had funding to pay for the research so we could apply for a federal grant. So some of the research that Jason did at the federal level has been put on hold until we can move forward with the initiative correctly, with the right research in place to prove that we need it. But it's not off the table, and it certainly will continue to be on Kingston's list now that it's been brought to their attention. Silver Lake land... Silver Lake land, the parcel that we're supposed to transfer from Silver Lake, from the Silver Lake region to the town of Kingston so they can conduct drainage improvements on Lake Street and improve the water quality of Jones River and Fish Run and everything else, did not make the number, the line was not voted by the end of the session. However, Catherine Matthews' office has informed me that it is still on the table and still being pursued as a home rule and that it was in a third committee, I don't know which one it is at this point, to perhaps move forward so we can actually make that improvement for the neighborhood. That plan may segue into further improvements on Lake Street with the turnaround, with the roundabout, with more pedestrian-friendly use of Lake Street between the two projects. So it's going to be a win-win if we can find the funding. Facilities director reported that we have HVAC issues running throughout the schools. We've had outage, several have been able to be replaced. The CTE office currently has not been able to be repaired and some temporary provisions were made. But right now, we're going to find ourselves looking at some funding for HVAC either that has failed. The admin building is highlighted also as a failure that's been mediated to some extent. But we are going to have to address some of these HVAC units and they're expensive. And I'd just like to give the committee a heads up that from budget time next year, we're going to have to make some decisions on these units and facilities going forward. And Sarah has included in her spreadsheet, this is available to everybody, right?
Yes, it's in the folder.
And I'm going to let her speak to it, but some of the funds that we have appropriated came back below and above, and there may be some funding sources. I thank her for showing us this because the doom and gloom on what we had to pay for felt a little better when she shared this going forward. And if you'd like to take over for a minute, Sarah, explain it.
Thank you. As you know, there were changes in personnel and Mike Wallace, Director of Facilities, and I pretty much got up and running in January. And so the money that was voted for the FY24 capital projects, we weren't really getting going on spending in the spring and the summer. And so what I put together for you is a spreadsheet that has the year, the fiscal year of when something was voted, what the project was, what the budget was, what has been expended, and then any balance or shortfall. And so right now, the high school electrical panels, we budgeted $50,000 for. The lowest quote that Mike has received is $65,000. But even using that number, the $65,000, we have $42,000 left over of FY24 capital that was not spent on the projects for FY24. And again, the envelope project, we just voted to the FY24 money, $130,000, we just voted tonight to award the contract. And so Mike Wallace and I feel that the money that was set aside in FY25 for the middle school, high school envelope repairs would be better used. Mike and I brought in ideas to SAFER about having a comprehensive facility study done. And Mark mentioned HVAC repairs. And I just want to mention that when you hear the word HVAC, the AC part sticks out in your mind. We're required by law to provide heat and we have some issues with the units providing heat. And so what I wanted to ask was if we could use the $100,000 from FY25, build an envelope, and the excess from FY24, unspent projects to fund a comprehensive facility study where our house doctor would go through and look at all of our systems and say, this is an immediate repair, this is a three-year, five-years, 10-year, give us an idea so that it could guide our discussions of the capital committee in the future. Any questions? The facility study, depending on what depth we ask them to do, would range somewhere between $50,000 and $75,000. And Mike Wallace would like to, with any of the access of the money, it wouldn't be spent on the facility study, would go to immediate repairs of HVAC.
Okay, so that's, this is basically a restructuring of our capital plan. And we historically have done that as a full committee vote to make these funds available. SAFER Committee supported the proposal that Sarah put forward yesterday at our meeting. And I think it's the good news. The comprehensive facilities review would mean for the first time, we will be making a facilities, a capital plan with some concrete information of what type of components are most likely to be failed, what we need to fix now, what we need to fix down the road. Our capital plan right now is pretty much a, I've got feeling of, yep, we're going to put this out there because it's coming. And without that kind of organization, that comprehensive review, we're going to continue to spin our wheels and maybe fund the wrong projects where we should be funding other ones. So we'd like to go forward with that. Lynn, Massachusetts has a similar one, I believe it's in your folder. Take a look at it if you want to see that. But it's also, Habib and associates did that one. We reviewed it this afternoon and I think it's going to be very effective to move forward if we could have that funding to go forward with that. It's better spent than trying to chase our tail. We'll know, for example, we can, we'll take one wing and we'll completely get it up to speed and do it geographically as opposed to fixing window leaks as we go all over the place and go back over the same area twice.
So what are you looking for?
I'd like to vote to use the excess funding from the projects at $42,442. And the other revenue that she has is a total of, it's still $126?
$100,000 from the FY25 capital for the middle school, high school envelope.
So a total of $142,442?
Yes.
Or is there other, anything else on the gym floor, any of that stuff? You have a grand total of $126 on the sheet, I guess.
That, the $126 is the FY25 project.
Okay.
And some of those projects, the high school bathrooms haven't been done yet. That's still going to be done.
So it's a total of $142,442 for HVAC and the comprehensive study we're focused. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'll make that motion then.
So before we put that out there?
Okay, motion.
This is not technically on the agenda. Can it actually be voted?
Change of the capital plan?
If it was discussed and this is part of your report, you can vote on the report if you're subcommittee. Technically, Mark's motion doesn't even need to be seconded if it comes from a subcommittee. Does that carry the weight of that it was more than one person? But yeah, we can take a vote on a report.
But are we taking a vote of just accepting the report or also accepting the recommendation to move money somewhere?
We can say that the facilities committee, the business manager planned to do this and I'll make that report and the end of my report, that should be adequate for vote. Vote to accept the report, you'd rather do that? But we're informing the committee that our capital situation is changing.
SAFER is recommending that we make an adjustment to the capital plan and who would have consented?
We're still net-spending the same money we were anticipating.
Right.
It's just reallocated.
It's just reallocated, okay. Okay, I'll continue with my report. We had a discussion on driver's education revenue and driver's education program. Elliot had an outstanding synopsis of the program, what we were spending, and we're in the low end of what driver's education costs. And it was not adequately funding the expenses we had for student. We made a motion to increase the fee, $825.
That's right.
And that fee will cover not just the expenses, but it also puts a very small amount of money away for maintenance. We do get a lot of our car maintenance done and by the CTE program. However, there are items that we have to get taken care of. We're currently teaching with a 2015 vehicle that is having some major issues. And before we ask this committee to fund replacing the driver's education vehicle in the capital plan, it's prudent, we felt, that we go forward and generate a little bit of revenue towards maintaining and replacing the equipment.
I will say with that, the driver's education teacher was out with a student driving and the car died. And thank God, he used his own AAA and was able to safely get the vehicle there and then get that vehicle towed back to the school.
On the little pieces.
And when you look at the comparables for just public schools around, we're $700 and we are the cheapest around. And we offer that with the certification, like the whole package. And if you look at like, let's just say Clement, they're $875. In Marshfield, they're $825. And it doesn't include the R and B cert and $175 for a road test sponsor. So when you take what we provide for the kids and what they're getting in that amount of money as opposed to what they have and then all the other add-ons, they're looking at close to $1,000 if not more. And then private schools, you're looking at probably $950 to $1,000. So we're very fortunate to have a driver's education head AAA who was driving that student that day. But also, we want to get like a little rainy day fund so when stuff like this happens that we can kind of tap into those resources.
You want to make a motion to approve the fee?
I will make a motion to approve the fee from $700 to $825.
Second.
Second. Question, please. Would this be for this school year?
That was going to be.
And the reason I'm asking is because parents are signing their children up.
Yes.
For fall. Can I get closed in first?
We would, we would honor that for the fall session.
For fall, you would honor.
We've already advertised that.
Yeah.
Parents to sign up.
So spring of 2025?
Next class.
The next session.
The next.
Yeah, we try to squeeze one in the winter.
I was just going to say the winter break one.
And Jen has, how many kids went through this program at the same time?
I already have triplets and I got my other one coming up. Looks like I got to pay up. I've got to pay for all of them.
Thank you for using the program.
Yes, I'm going to do so.
Any further discussion about the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
All abstaining because it actually affects my children this year. So all abstaining.
All right, the last thing is, I just want to keep on the table and bring up, we discussed at length, the administration building and the current one, we have the possibility of getting, moving along with something. I think that it's going to generate something I'd like to bring to the budget process to move forward on, at least helping us define which direction we're going to go. The three options we discussed was the 8 million 8,000 square foot building that was presented to us by the study that was done that would replace the administration building in an adjacent site. The second thing we pursued was renting or purchasing of an off-site facility. Commercial space right now is depressed and there is some office space available in one of the towns. Several of one of those we looked at and actually viewed as a committee. And it looked as if it was possible, it is still on the market, and that price was in the 1.8 range, million dollars, which is less than one quarter of the price we'd be renovating to make it accommodating. It's in great shape right now, but it would need configuration to meet our admin space needs. The third one was brought forth by a member of the SAFER Committee, Lucas, was to look at, and myself, we looked at building a 4,000 square foot annex next to and immediately adjacent to the middle building we had. That would bring our square footage and that would be at the same floor level as the second floor of the existing building. We would use handicap ramp for the new building that would then go the three or four feet over to the older building and be accessible. We'd bring the bathrooms and plumbing into the new facility and we'd be able to use both. And some future school committee could decide to remove and replace the older section and then they'd have it completely. So sort of cut the cost in half at this point and see if we can move forward with the initiative. So all three of those are out there. We would need further study to see what our new building would look like, be back to an architect. And if we decide on that, it's going to require a funding source, which would be at Spring Town meeting. In the middle of that conversation, superintendent brought up the fact that we may be in the need because of space considerations at Kingston Elementary School where we leased space for preschool. We may be in the need of a preschool facility. So we may be incorporating these into one look and that puts us back into the off-site. We go off-site and get a building, building big enough for both. But to move forward on the preschool, whether we really need one, demographic study would be needed $10,000 to $15,000. We need to be about to do that to look at the planned population growth and student growth in the three towns. And I think that personally, that would be a good initiative to move forward with as a school, put on the budget, come up next fiscal year to do actually study and see what we're going to need for the schools going forward. And lastly, the middle school project, the ARPA funds that were put aside for the middle school, was a bid at 1.2 million to try to bring classroom AC into substantial part of the middle school. That project has, at the scope of it, though not required, does require, was highly recommended that we have somebody oversee the process going forward. We currently don't have funding for that. So if we need to have somebody be on-site to watch the contractor conduct that program, that's scheduled for right now, bid out for next summer. We would have to find funding between now and next summer to be able to fund this oversight. We're going to do some more research and find out how much and what level of oversight we need, whether or not a house doctor can do it, which we're not sure. And if they can, it's still going to be a charge that we're going to have to find funding source for. Again, put on the, I think the superintendent has a comment and that's all I've got.
I have two. My first comment is on the demographic study. My recommendation is, was related to a Kingston concern about their population increase and their facility in particular. That pressure on space could impact Silver Lake. But the demographic study recommendation was to determine Kingston's needs for their school building. So I wanted to clarify that. The other item is the ARPA funds. If I recall correctly, we had discussed and recognized that we would probably need to have someone oversee a project of this capacity and expense to make sure that it was done properly. So I recognize that we're at that point where we need to start thinking about that again. But I don't believe that that's news to some members of our committee who were part of that original process.
So tangentially off that then, we're talking about reallocating some unused capital funds from last year. But yet we need to find funds to move forward with a $1.4 million project. Why are we not using the funds from last year to fund that oversight?
Why are we not using the funds from last year to fund that oversight?
Well, if I can take the beginning of that, I don't know if that's a full answer, but the envelope money that we had, a substantial amount of $100,000, that envelope study, we discussed whether spending that money arbitrarily to continue our envelope work arbitrarily or go forward with a plan, we thought we'd take a breather, get the plan done, and then be able to move forward. It's somewhat directly related to our facilities maintenance, but I understand...
And I love that idea, I just want to put that out there. We've been trying to get our facilities director since we created that position, to try and map out the needs of our buildings in a timeline, so it sounds like we might be getting there with your idea for the use of the funds.
Right, but we just want to understand the limitations of the individuals we have. Nobody on the committee is experienced enough to oversee air conditioning, nor are they experienced enough to go through 20-year-old schools and be able to identify the component that might fail next. And some of the items that have been brought up in discussions are major heating components, and if they fail, we're going to have an emergency situation like you highlighted before. So that part of the study, I think, is important, and I think we need to do it sooner than later this year so that we can move forward with a good plan. We have until next summer to find funding. I understand it's going to be a little tight if you get approval at a town meeting for funding July 1st, and you've already got the job starting when school gets out in June. So we were still discussing, and we ran out of time for the meeting. We're going to have another meeting September 26th to continue the discussion of what type of oversight. But the first indicators were 10% of the bid, and that's the substantial, not the crack, and we don't have enough money here to even talk about it. So I don't think that going forward, it should be that much, I don't think we need that level of oversight, we need to define it more, and I would want to take one little minute of editorial, that we have a facilities director and more particularly business manager that is absolutely out straight, doing 14 hours a day or whatever she can, answering emails that I send her at 9:30 at night, and she still answers them because she doesn't want to have to answer the next day, I'm sure. We really need to look at our staffing and our financial side. And one of the things we're doing is trying to unload and focus the business department and facilities department on the Silver Lake region that they were tasked and employed to manage. The townings have been very nice, getting nice services from us, but whether or not the job description involves us to prepare bid documents for town schools, these are facilities that the Silver Lake region doesn't own. So we've been helpful in the education side of that, but we have to find that line. And we're working this month with the three town administrators to draw that line and define where our resources are going, and I hope to unload these guys a little bit, have them be able to get more of the Silver Lake with this stuff. Can I sum that up well enough? Is that Sarah? I don't know, but I just, I really would like to keep focused on the region.
But the summary answer to the question I asked is, this site manager for the $1.4 million project that we're using the ARPA funds for is not as time-sensitive as putting together a comprehensive plan of the life expectancy of all the HVAC unit area, and which we have on our roofs and other components of our buildings, and that's why SAFER's subcommittee has suggested us using the excess funds from last year to fund that project and stuff.
It is, and additionally, we have yet to define what level of oversight we need, and there's some, a wide spectrum, I think, of what we expect and what the contract that we have for the bid should be responsible legally for, that if they don't perform in a way, we need some type of oversight because I certainly am not qualified, and I don't think we have any expectations that we have the time or resources within staff to be able to do that. But we do have a little time to solve that problem. Thank you. Thanks.
So I think through now, so we need a vote on accepting your report, and we recommend it move adjustment of capital.
Thanks, Sarah. I was just going to make a statement, and it's not a good one, so if you glossed over it, I would have been okay, but given that I've been called out, I'm going to say, one of my big concerns since I got here is priorities of projects, and I have to be honest with you, I sort of hit the roof the day I found out that we spent a half a million dollars on the new tennis courts, and we have portions of the buildings that the heat doesn't work. So I absolutely feel strongly, I understand what you're saying, but about the amount of money we're talking about with the capital, and that's going towards a comprehensive study because we know what's not working, and part of that money will go towards that, but I have no idea what's going to go next because, again, I have a degree in math, I love spreadsheets. So we really need somebody to say, hey, you've got this $500 system that's going to go any minute now.
I actually think the last time we did the envelope study, Laryn Springer was on the committee, I mean, it goes back...
2014.
Was it 2014?
2013, 2014.
Yeah, so 10, 11 years ago.
Okay, can I have a motion? So we need a motion to accept, Mark said changes on the cap, and I recommend it changes to the capital plan.
Okay. Okay, I would make a motion to reallocate the excess dollars as described in our discussion, reallocate those dollars from the capital plan, on the capital plan rather, to engaging in envelope study.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
HBAC leftover for that?
It's not an envelope study, it's a comprehensive facility plan. So it's used the envelope...
Funds.
Funds for a more comprehensive facility plan.
And the remainder of the funds will be used for HVAC repairs.
Okay, if somebody wants to change, adjust that.
And the motion, what's that?
I have Mark's original, I can just read that.
Okay. Make some may, and second, are you good? Second, okay with that change?
Second.
Because we've already, okay. She's...
I'd just like to add one more thing that is going to be gone in October, and Paul is going to take over as chair of SAFER if you have any questions.
I'm taking over as chair of SAFER? Wait a minute, I'm here, I'm not Mike. I'm covering for one meeting.
Yes.
I'm saying thank you.
That's what I think.
Oh, my goodness.
October, you get October. Need anything, call Paul.
So the treasurer is going to be gone too.
Call Mike.
Any treasurer's report?
Yeah, I don't know what I've got. Sarah, do I have anything to report?
I don't have anything to report.
All right, thank you. Anything for meeting at 31.
Just that there is a meeting, thank you Gordon for changing the time of this meeting to 6:30 on the 17th of October. It is a reorganization meeting, but we'll discuss the rest in a second.
Okay. Signature warrants.
So currently our meetings are out of sync with the warrant cycle, the next warrant is September 12th, which will go out for digital signatures next month.
Okay. If there are any attachments, I think you can refer to the reception room. They're not returned. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session. There's chapter 30A, section 21-2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-working personnel, superintendent, not to return to open session, an executive session pursuant to MGL chapter 30A, section 21-7, to comply with their act under the authority of any general or special law, a privilege of executive session minutes, since 16, 2024, June 6, 2024, and June 26, 2024, not to return to open session. Second.
All right, that's our call.
Yes.
Okay, Jason?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.